Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or Meganet.
And I'd like to have you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance if you would.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Megan English-Bragg is joining us remotely tonight because she has to take care of her kids at home. And recognition, does anybody have anything that they want to mention tonight for recognition?
I might mention that I, this is back on January the 2nd, but I attended the Eagle Court of Honor for Ricky LaRuffo. And again, just a great representative of Falmouth and did some great work on his Eagle Scout project. That's all I have.
Great. Those Eagle Scouts have done a lot of work for us. Announcements. Well, we had an article in the Cape Cod Times last week about opioid litigation, and the enterprise was good enough to counter it with another article, but Town Council Frank Duffy is here. Just maybe, Mr. Duffy, if you would comment, please, on the town's involvement in the opioid litigation, so people understand where we are at.
Yes, I'm Frank Duffy, Town Council. I read the article in the Cape Cod Times and I had the same reaction to it that a lot of people did, but let me just give you a brief summary of what the situation is. Back in September of 2018, the town joined what is called the Massachusetts Opioid Litigation Consortium, and through our attorneys in Boston, we filed a claim against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The claim has been filed in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, where all opioid claims in the United States have been consolidated in what's called multi-district litigation. Our claim is on file, and we are represented by the Massachusetts Opioid Litigation Consortium. Now, we have been part of this consortium since 2018, and we have been participating in it. Now, several years, or about maybe a year or two later, the attorneys general in several of the states realized that not every community had participated in this litigation and had filed claims. So on behalf of some of these claims that were, communities that were not represented, the attorneys general intervened in the cases. And that is sort of what you read about in the paper. Now, we did not join the attorney general because we were already in. Now, the Cape Cod Times article said that there was a settlement pending, and the attorneys general made a statement about it, but it also said that Falmouth had not opted in. And I saw that and I spilled my coffee on my table. Well, we did not opt in because we didn't have to, we were already in. So we have a claim that's on file, and it will be processed with all the other municipalities that have filed claims. So there was really no need to opt in. Now, I'd just like to give you an overview perhaps of the progress of the litigation. It is unlikely that any of these claims will go to trial. There are thousands and thousands of lawsuits. There will be a settlement, and it will be what is called in legal parlance a global settlement. And by a global settlement, that means that all parties who have a claim will be at the table, and they will participate in the settlement. There is no settlement now. There are proposed settlements, but they have not been accepted. It's probably going to be several months or maybe even half a year before there is a settlement that is approved by the parties, that includes us and the court. The settlement will be probably a huge amount of money, in the billions of dollars. It will be paid into a fund over a lengthy period of time, 15, 20 years perhaps, by the manufacturers and distributors from their operating revenue, and it will be distributed over that same period of time according to a formula that we do not know presently, but will be based upon the individual towns or communities damages or exposure to the opioid crisis. So I have been keeping the town manager informed of anything that I learn, and he's been passing it on to you. I'll continue to do that. There's nothing specific to report at the present time.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And now we have opportunity for public comment. Is anyone here to make public comment this evening? Anything that's not on our agenda? Being none, I guess we'll move on. Summary of actions, administrative orders, approve ever-source petition to install one three-inch PVC conduit and cable of approximately 37 feet under a town road on Nickerson Street, approximately 901 feet east of Maravista Avenue southerly from handhole number 384/H6-A at the base of pole 384/6. This work is to be done to provide electric service to number 49 Nickerson Street, Falmouth. Motion to approve?
Based on the recommendation of our Department of Public Works, I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Thank you. Next is approve ever-source petition to install approximately 55 feet of conduit and cable under a town road near the intersection of Bridge Street and Monot Road, and to install one new handhole labeled 235-H15 in public right-of-way on Westerly Side of Road. This work is to be done to provide electric service to number 2 Bridge Street in Falmouth. Motion to approve?
Again, based on the advice of our Department of Public Works, I move approval.
Second.
And all those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And next is vote to approve a letter of support for Woods Hole Diversity Action Committee's grant proposal for National Science Foundation Includes Program.
I move that...
I just want to, I did file the conflict of interest documentation because I am a PI on this grant. I don't receive any compensation from HUI. It's on a volunteer basis, but I wanted to announce.
Appreciate that.
I move that we approve this, or endorse this grant application.
Second.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, based on this vote, and there was a duplication with item J, as you probably saw.
Right.
I'll forward a letter of support on behalf of the board as a result of, if you vote can, in the positive on that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, by roll call?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you. And next we have vote, D is vote to approve a request from the 300 Committee for Conservation Restriction for the Florence Sylvia Woodland Zero Millstone Street, Falmouth, Mass., 02556.
So moved.
Second. With appreciation to the 300 Committee.
Yes.
Another parcel to take a walk with the dog.
On a leash.
On a leash. And so we have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And vote to waive fees for Conservation Commission Request for Determination of Applications for 11 Osprey Pole Installations by the Osprey Project and Together We Can at Various Locations. And this would be to approve all fees that are under our capacity to so approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
And thank you very much for your efforts.
Yes.
It's a great project.
Appreciate that. And vote to approve application to Mass. Department of Housing and Community Development for local initiative program for local action units and related documents consistent with special permit approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals for 533-539 Woods Hole Road. Anybody have questions or comments about this one?
No. I would move approval.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you. Next is vote to increase the spending limit for the senior services revolving account to $250,000 for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
I have a, just a technical question.
Go ahead.
It's, they're seeking an increase from $60,000 to $250,000. What is, what is the budget? How does it work?
Not really related to the budget itself, it's, this is the operating of the cafe. Jill Bishop's here, would you like to answer that for us?
I can take a first stab if Jill wants to expand on it, but, so the revolving accounts, the strange answer that you're getting, which is accurate from Doug and the other board members, is that the revolving account means they can only spend the money that they bring in. So the town meeting sets an upset limit on the total amount that can be expended, not the amount that can be collected. In this case, the, we were cautious about how much activity there might be at the cafe and with the programs, and Jill's done just a fabulous job in getting that up and running quickly. So our revenues have far exceeded expectations, and our expenditures need to move along with that. So in order to buy the food that is being paid for at the cafe, for example, we need to increase the limit.
That makes sense. Thank you. So I second that if it hasn't already been...
I second it, but that's okay.
I move.
Yep.
All right.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Well done, Jill.
And now we have, this is a vote to sign a petition to the General Court to effectuate the vote of Article 18 of the November 2021 Annual Town Meeting to remove the Falmouth Police Department from civil service.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Next is authorize the town manager to transmit a letter of support for a grant for the Friends of Knobsculite from the Massachusetts Cultural Commission.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mention that this is not the first time that they've applied to the Massachusetts Cultural Commission for grants, so it will not be a first.
Right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Next is a public hearing in the Woodland Dock hearing for Nina's Marina Realty Trust. They've requested another extension.
Yes, extension to 7:30 PM on Monday, January 31st, if that is the pleasure of the board.
Is the board willing to accept another extension?
At the request of the applicant, I move that we continue this hearing until January, I'm sorry, what's the date?
31st.
31st.
At 7:30. At 7:30 PM.
At 7:30 PM.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you. And next we have COVID-19 update and recommendation from Scott McGann.
Crazy guy. Hi, everybody, Scott McGann, your health agent. I was hoping not to come back so soon. No offense. Not this soon, anyway. Just give me one sec, please.
Thank you for all your reporting. Your weekly reports have been very helpful.
Good. Well, if you've seen my weekly reports, this might be somewhat repetitive, but not really. So, let's see here.
We're up there.
That's pretty ugly. To start off, this is our PCR testing. This has always been PCR, and I'll tell you why that's important in a second. You can see I had to adjust the scale, we had to adjust the scale to 400, so you see the peaks that you saw back in here look so small compared to what you're seeing on the far right. So our case count was pushing 400 in one given week. I think our highest was like 86 for one day. This is also only PCR, this doesn't count home tests. So we are moving towards more self-reliance and home testing, and contact tracing looks a little different now, and things of that nature, I'll talk a little bit about it later. Our case count's 3,362 as of this afternoon, with an unknown number of home tests in here. These are just the PCR tests. So to say that it's gone off the hook in the last four weeks would be an understatement. So that's cases, and in orange is what we got so far this week, so it looks to be a similar week about halfway through in terms of just total case counts. Okay? Now, similar to the, this is Barnstable County's three-day average, so they're looking exactly the same as us, obviously, we're about 11% of the population in the county, so it doesn't look, it definitely looks like you would think it would look. Our incidence rate is lower than the state's, state's top says 151, that's an average number of daily cases per 100,000 population, so all these populations are adjusted to 100,000. We're somewhere in the middle of the road at 96.6, which gives us somewhere in the 30 or so, in this particular timeframe. This is only from December 19th to January 1st, because the state puts this out a little bit of a delay. This is the most recent chart. So you don't have to get too much into the data, other than, we're sort of middle of the pack, we're also sort of middle of the pack, this is a percent positivity, but we used to like to see numbers of somewhere, if anybody remembers, 2 or 3%, not 12. State's 15. So all this tells you there is a boatload of COVID around. You are, going back up to the original chart, somewhere around at the peak of the pandemic, which was like roughly this time last year, you're about three to four times more likely to see, we're seeing three to four times more cases than we had ever seen, and it's true everywhere pretty much in the state. Now, let's talk about hospitalizations, because I want, you know, without knowing a true accurate count of case count, it's a little frustrating for somebody who likes to post and give you accuracy every week, I'm giving you a case count that's just PCR, is looking at hospitalizations. So here's the hospitalizations, the top two are the most recent data I've gotten, we will use Falmouth Hospital for example, is 15 with four in the ICU, with the vast majority of those being unvaccinated, generally speaking. And 14 and four on the 5th, and somewhere around in there. But I want to show you the next slide, the comparable. At this time last year, remember, we were over in here for the county, somewhere in this range, and our hospitalizations were not all that dissimilar you're seeing in the 40s and 50s in teens. So what that tells you is that, you know, any one individual, and I'll show you the couple slides, actually, I'll hold off on that for one second, I want to show you a couple more things. Here is the deaths, the three-day death average, again, going back to that first bump that we thought was really, really bad this time last year, we were getting three-day death totals of 16, 15. You see, now we're at the far right, you see more 4s, 5s, and 6s.
This is for Baltimore County?
This would be Barnstable County, yep. So this would be the entire county. And also, looking at the state, the state puts this out, and I find this to be a very interesting chart, is that this is all the cases of breakthrough, so up until 1-1, there was 179,594 breakthrough cases, 3,909 hospitalizations, and 942 deaths. That 2.18% is just take the numbers and put them in. That number was closer to four when they first printed this chart out. So what I'm trying to say is that any one individual's risk of being hospitalized and death among those, again, I'm only talking about those that have been vaccine boosted, because we'll talk about that in a sec, their hospitalization rate is much lower, is trending lower than it was in the previous versions. Does that make sense? Because there's a boatload more cases, and yes, there's a lot of hospitalizations, and if we keep going with this caseload, the hospitals would be overwhelmed just by the sheer numbers, even if it's 2% of the people being hospitalized, if you're getting 1,000 cases, you're heavy. So, but anyone's individual, anyone's individual health status, this, if you've been vaccine boosted with Omicron, is a bit lower. Okay, so that's, I guess, one good thing out of all the cases, okay? Here's my Omicron slide. In the, all that orange starts on 10-2, so the far left you see 10-2, it's all Delta, Delta is orange. As you move towards Thanksgiving, it's still all Delta. And look what happens over the last five weeks. We go from like 2% to 6%, somewhere a little under 40%, about 80% around the holidays, and now it's well into the 90s, and I bet you the chart's going to be even more purple, the purple indicating being Omicron. So Omicron's really taken over. And so it does appear, at least with the state call in this past week, they've concluded that it does appear to be definitely more transmissible, and I would not doubt that, because over the last five weeks, look what's happened to the case counts. Perhaps less severe, and I think the combination of Omicron generally causing more upper respiratory sore throat, you hear more headache, you hear more upper respiratory, less of the deeper lung. That's not for everybody, you know, everybody's results are unfortunately going to vary, is that that and the combination of the boosters and the vaccine is what's kept this, it kept less severe outcomes, especially among those that have been boosted. Our vaccination rates, here's our vaccination chart. I added a, the state's been providing us the boosters given, so you can see that we're 94% of all residents have had one dose. That's a lot. 82% of all eligible residents are fully vaccinated. So there's a fair amount of people who didn't get their second dose, for whatever reason. We issued about 495 doses, were administered between the two-week period. Boosters were about 40%, of 12,622 residents have been boosted. So I guess my encouragement would be to anybody that's been looking for a booster should get one, because we're a little, I think a little lighter than I thought maybe we would be for boosters, but it's only been, it's been about two months now, roughly, where everybody can get a booster, month and a half. As far as vaccines, again, vaxfinder.mass, you get the pharmacies, Barnstable County, Convenient MD, Community Health Center, homebound, those that are homebound, and the senior center knows that as well, is to call the health department, we make an arrangement with the VNA, and we'll come down and take care of somebody that's homebound. We have a clinic with the VNA coming up at the Gus Canty, we had some 40 spots, that with this slide I made last Friday, that number might be less, but we have clinics, we'll start running some more clinics there as well, out of the Gus Canty, using the VNA. But then I post that on the health department's website. So those are opportunities for booster, that's a booster clinic, should be a little bit more specific on that. Testing, it's been a bear in the schools, the schools are trudging on with the test and stay, and the test and stay has been an absolute bear to have to do on a daily basis, especially with this case count. Testing, you go to Convenient MD, the pharmacies, everybody knows that. Falmouth Hospital is going to be expanded to doing more testing, they're going to post some more information, trying to make it easier as opposed to having to go through, you have to go through my chart and the things of Cape Cod Healthcare in order to get a test there. They're working on changing that and expanding that. Community Health Center, the Fairgrounds still does it, check the website, Barnstable Fairgrounds, that's funding-dependent. Of course, home tests, you may have some questions on home tests, people are scrambling to get home tests. And also, the state just opened up today the Stop the Spread site, which is at the Melody Tent, which would also help, they could do somewhere around 500 a day is what I heard what their capacity would be for testing. So, any questions on COVID? So you're more likely to get it right now, but your outcome is generally going to be as a percentage of the population at a lower, slightly lower risk, so does that make sense to everybody?
I don't have a question, but just a comment that the online, you know, the pharmacy scheduling, the boosters, just kind of a difficult pain in the butt, you know, and I wish we had some more clinics where people could just walk in and get a shot.
Yeah, I think part of it is the entities that do this bill, and that's where you get the billing part of it, you know, as far as then just having it and doing it. So there's a, they get your information, they, I think, last time I checked, it was $40 for billing, so I think that part of it's got, and each one wants to do their own proprietary, because it makes it easier for, I won't pick on anybody in particular, but for CVS, it doesn't make convenient for them. So they started out with their own systems, and everybody did. So the only way to do it is to make the vax finder sort of a clearinghouse for all the different websites that will allow you to register. The ones that we use, that the Barnstable County uses called Color, and it's a pretty good system, but still, it's an online, you know, the online, it's not the old days where you come in and fill out a piece of paper, or non-paper at all. I mean, without any paperwork or documentation, it also wouldn't make MIIS, which is all the tracking for the vaccines, unless you had some sort of tracking system. So if it's like no questions asked, we'll give you a shot, we're not going to know that, you know, if you have to produce a vaccine, you know, if you're traveling, and some country says you need to have a vaccine passport, or now we have cities that do that, you wouldn't be able to provide that without having some sort of tracking on it. And the state just today, I don't have a slide for it, just today, came up with a, you can go to their website and look up, and get, I guess, a virtual card or something of that nature, that just came out this afternoon, so you need to have the tracking of whether you offer a vaccine status. But yes, I mean, especially...
I have a question?
Yes, please.
So I had the personal experience, and I also had a couple of communications from residents, similar experience where they made their appointment at a particular pharmacy and got there, and the pharmacy was proud of the booster. Does Scott know, is that something that he's starting to see system-wide, or is it just a blip right now? Does he have any insight on that?
I don't, because they, they're directly lined in with the feds, and we don't have any involvement with any of the private sector, the sector ones. If you had a problem at one that I ran, or the Barnstable County, I could help you. You know, so if any of the VNA ones are the ones that we run, but the ones that are run by, you know, Stop and Shop or whatever, Shaw's or whoever is doing it, are really directly tied into either the state or the feds. And so, yeah, I'm sure that happens. Don't know why, because they really should draw 100 doses for 100 appointments, it's really not that hard, but I'm sure, but if you went, at the end of the day, and somebody came in and says, can you really do my aunt, my aunts with me right now, and then they give away your shot, and they don't draw, I guess that kind of stuff must happen, but really out of my, out of, you know, sort of my control, definitely.
I hit the lady at the Walgreens, tell me that, oh, you could have brought your wife, and I was like, how could I have done that?
Yeah, I mean, they, they're different, you know, some people really like, you know, I had, I got my booster at CVS, it was seamless. But not, you know, your results will vary, unfortunately, you know.
I just chose the Walgreens because it was a local one that was available, and CVS, even though we've got a couple of them in town, they kept on trying to send me the new bed for it, or...
Yeah. And, you know, we've, you know, maybe I didn't post the clinic will do a little bit better advertising, I was surprised to see spots open after, you know, roughly a week, so, you know, we did the push through the email and things like that, but I thought they'd go quick. I don't know, right now, I, it's hard for me to gauge if people are waiting a long time to get a booster right now, I knew they were a few weeks ago.
We had to wait two and a half weeks?
Well, it opened up...
Because we didn't want to travel.
Well, every, it also opened up to everybody at the same time. Well, every, it also opened up to everybody at the same time, so you always have that, the glut that happens, the, the push, and then it slows down, and, you know, I, I don't know the status of how long people are waiting, what I need to do is I'll go on there and pretend I need one, and then that's how I find out, is I go to the various sites, and I go all the way to the registration process to see how far away we are. But with 80 cases a day, I really don't have time to do anything but talk to, you know, daycare centers and all the other stuff that we do every day, so.
Did I hear you correctly, Scott, that, did you say that there's a, a county or town, place where you can go online and schedule it?
Well, on my website, I had, did a clinic with the, with the VNA, which is, is, I just put the link on the website, I, I didn't, you know, you know, we can do, and did the push on the email, and we sent out, and Jill did it as well for the senior center, if anybody was looking for one. That was only going to be 100 doses.
Okay.
And technically, what it is, the VNA is working on their online, so they started to go to Color, this is the first clinic they used Color, when they get comfortable with Color, we can run more clinics. You know, it's different for how they do it, so that they've gotten used to doing it. We still do clinics at the schools, the schools know, you know, just, Falmouth Academy just set one up, I, I just, all I do is put you in touch with either Deirdre at Barnstable County or the VNA, and we can, and we schedule clinics. So getting clinics scheduled isn't really a big deal right now, this, we don't seem to have a shortage of vaccine to do it, you know, for the boosters, so. It just gets a little complicated, because when you run a clinic, you've got to figure out how many people need Moderna, how many people need Pfizer, you know, you have to open up so many openings for each one, but, you know, we can do it. So if you want to complain about the clinics, the only ones I really have control with would be the ones that I schedule, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You got for us?
Yeah, I got one more thing for you. So on our January 3 meeting, the Board of Health voted to encourage the Select Board to adopt an indoor mask requirement in town, town-controlled facilities, and to encourage private entities to consider requiring at their locations as well. So they're asking, the rationale being that you have control over town-owned buildings, where the Board of Health is more controlled of everything. They did not vote to have a, a full mandate everywhere, so they asked that, you know, as, as to show sort of a, what the word I'm looking for, I actually wrote down the words I was looking for. You know, sort of a role model, was the word I was looking for, that you would have a requirement in, in town-owned facilities, you know, rec center, senior center. I would say the bulk of my complaints were either senior center or rec center. For example, DESI has guidelines that kids have to wear masks in school, but then they go play volley, you know, play a sport over there at the rec center, why, why are they not doing it? I do get, you know, questions of why we don't have a full mask mandate, that's the Board of Health's decision, any decision I make would need a retroactive vote of the Board of Health, so the Board of Health gets the information that I put out every week. So it's not like early in the pandemic where I made decisions, because, you know, I'm, I'm following it more than anybody else, everybody's had a chance to know what's going on, so I let the board make the decision, do the decision that they came up with was, you know, that they felt, and plus, it's also, a, a full mask mandate's got a lot to do with enforcement, you know, that means I'm running down and chasing the guy in the red jacket at the local grocery store that he wasn't wearing a mask, those calls will come in and pour in, and it's, and it's really, we're, I see an increase in mask wearing, I don't know if you guys went over the weekend, I definitely see it, you know, somewhere, maybe 80% or so, or higher in some places. So people are watching and are following what's going on, and then you see mask wearing go up and down, as the case counts go up and down. And so, but they did ask that, they encouraged that you guys would adopt that for town-controlled facilities.
I'd like to make that motion, basically, to basically require that masks be worn in all town-controlled facilities, and that we also, I don't know how we can do it, other than through the Board of Health, but encourage the private entities to consider doing the same thing.
Yeah, we can only encourage the private, I mean, we control the town buildings.
I understand.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Is there a second before we move on, or otherwise it's dead?
I would second the motion.
Yeah. Okay, if I can make, while Marty is coming up, I mean, I was in town hall this today, and there were people at Qual Two here without masks on, and given the statistics that Mark, that, excuse me, that Scott is showing us, I mean, we ought to be able to reinforce that for the, for the sake of people. I had a mask on, so I didn't feel terribly threatened, but it's, you know, it's, it is a public health issue, and I think we should be trying to encourage it as much as possible.
Go ahead.
Mark Fineran, Grand Ave, I have a Swiss Policy Research paper here, it's an overview of current evidence regarding the effectiveness of masks. I mean, we're a scientific town, and I think the science should be known. A May 2, 2020 made a study by the, on pandemic influenza, published by the USC, CDC, found that face masks had no effect, neither as personal protective equipment, or as source protocol, which would, source control, which would be spreading it to others. A Danish randomized control test with 6,000 participants, published in the Annals of Internal Medicine in November 2020, found statistically significant effect of high-quality face mask, no statistically significant effect of high-quality medical face masks against SARS-CoV-2 infection in a community setting. A large randomized controlled trial with close to 8,000 participants, published in October 2020 in PLOS One, found that face masks did not seem to be effective against laboratory-confirmed viral respiratory infections, nor against clinical respiratory infection. There's several more. A February 2021 review by the European CDC found no high-quality evidence supporting the effectiveness of non-medical and medical face masks in the community. Furthermore, the European CDC advised against the use of N95 masks by the general public. Same thing with the, an Oxford Center for Evidence-Based Medicine, found that there is no significant effectiveness of face masks against viral infection or transmission. Same with a November 2020 Cochrane review, found that masks did not reduce influenza-like illness, neither in the general population nor in healthcare workers. An April 2020 study reviewed by two professors of respiratory infectious disease from the University of Illinois concluded, Illinois concluded that face masks had no effect in everyday life, neither as self-protection, nor as to protect third parties. Same with an article in the New England Journal of Medicine in May 2020, came to the conclusion that face masks offer little or no protection in everyday life. A 2015 study by the British Journal, British Medical Journal, found that cloth masks were penetrated by 97% of the particles, and may increase infection risk by retaining moisture or repeated, on repeated years.
I just question the sources, because that's not what I'm hearing, and I would like to defer-
Well, where, where, I would, that's what I was going to get to.
Those are pretty old, too. You're reporting information, but I have no idea about how credible that information is, and if you're, if you're making all these statements, and in fact, we're finding out that, that, I mean, I'm, I've not heard any of this on the news spoken out by the departments of the CDC and infectious-
Oh, let's see, there was a, a CDC source right here, the first one.
You're saying that, but I'm questioning your sources.
Okay, well, you can, this is the Swiss Policy Research, you can look it up yourself.
Who are they?
Oh, it's-
Anyway, that's my point, I don't want the public to think that this is valid information, when it may not be. I'm not saying it's-
Well, it, it-
But it doesn't match the sources that I've been getting.
And where are yours?
It's exactly the opposite.
And, where are your sources?
Directly just statements made on, you know, public radio stations and TV stations from the directors of the CDC and infectious disease.
Well, these are 10 peer-reviewed studies, which you can certainly look up yourself, I mean-
Could be taken out of context as well.
And they could be fake.
Well, they could be, but so could be what you're listening to.
No, not, not directly from the directors of those agencies.
All right. Um, I, this is out there, I mean, I've researched it, and my question, one more. WHO admitted to the BBC that its June 2020 mask policy update was due not to new evidence, but political lobbying. We have been told by various sources, the WHO committee reviewing the evidence, had not backed, backed masks, but they recommended them due to political lobbying. Also, the negatives of masks, you can look up the effects of hypoxia on cancer, and I mean, you can also see that cancer cases are rising. They also have a serious effect, and it's been measured in the last few years, on the IQs of young children, because they learn to speak, and they learn to communicate by looking at one's face. Different studies have put this at nine to 18 IQ points, which is substantial. And then another fact, which you can look up yourself, the 1918, 19 flu epidemic, a large percentage of, percentage of the deaths were caused by bacterial pneumonia from wearing masks. And now, one thing I never hear is recommended that people increase their intake of vitamin D, which basically is a, it's not, it's not even a vitamin, it's a hormone, but it runs your immune system. The vast majority of people who die from COVID are, their blood tests low in vitamin D. And I myself have asthma. I'm usually never bothered by it, occasionally, a few times a year, but if I start wearing a mask, the, it's exponentially worse. And my final question is, what peer-reviewed science do we have that says that masks are effective? I just haven't, you know, I'm not, I haven't found any. Can you cite one?
Mr. Chair, can I?
Give it to me so I can research it.
Yep. Megan, go ahead.
Doug, if I may, I just, I just want to say, particularly in light of what happened at Falmouth Hospital last week, we have doctors, nurses, first responders, who are begging people not only to get vaccinated, but to take every precaution, because they themselves, when they go to work every day, are exposed to really serious, not only risks of contracting COVID themselves, as happening on the family members, but they are exposed to these enormous numbers of fatalities that they have experienced over the course of the last two years, people who have traumatic experiences of watching, you know, dozens, sometimes in city hospitals, hundreds of people suffering and dying. And if they are just asking us to do a very simple thing, like get a vaccine, and if you choose not to, that's your choice, so maybe instead you go ahead and you wear a mask. I mean, these are not individuals who are political, they're frontline workers who are doing, frankly, the work that, you know, they do not get paid even a fraction of the value of what they've done over the last two years. And so if they are asking us, and you can look at pretty much any source, and they are saying, you know, this is what frontline folks are asking us to do, I just don't see that being, that there being any reason why we wouldn't try to honor that, and make their work a little bit easier. It is a field that has been decimated in numbers, in staffing, and they are doing their very best, and you answer it, something like last week, where they're there, toiling away, and then they're exposed to fentanyl, this is a, this is a work environment that probably, you know, I, I hesitate to say it in the world we live in, but couldn't be much worse than it is right now. And I don't think you're going to find a single individual in that setting that isn't going to ask us to take precautions and just do basic things, wear a mask, wash our hands, you know, just use common sense, inexpensive, simple, simple remedies. So, you know, I know we can find studies that say a million different things, but we go right to the source of the folks who are keeping us healthy and, and serving us when we're sick, those are the, that's really the data that I need. So I hope that we just, you know, if we don't want to, don't want to get into the political pieces of it, think about the people, you know, component, so that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't disagree with any of that, except I've looked, I, I can't find the science that says that it's effective, I can find plenty that says it's not.
Okay, thank you.
So for, for those who-
Like, we're going-
Right.
We're going to hear from Mr. Johnson.
Right, so while Scott is approaching the microphone, I don't, I don't need a response, thank you. While Scott is approaching the microphone, if anyone is looking for studies that demonstrate the efficacy of masks, you can simply go to the CDC website, I have it up here, it's, cites, you know, a dozen studies, and talks about how they're continuously reviewing new studies that come in and new evidence, it also points out some studies that have been mischaracterized. I didn't find specifically any of the ones that Mark cited, but, you know, certainly there are many studies, variety of conclusions, but the CDC, and every physician I've spoken to, there seems to be a, a broad consensus among people in the industry that masks, particularly surgical masks, are effective.
And when you think about it, it's, you know, when you sneeze, you cover your mouth, when you cough, you turn, turn away, you're trying not to project your bodily fluids on other folks, I think it's more of a considerate thing, I don't expect this to protect me from anything particular, but it keeps my, my breath to myself, for the most part. I think it's got to be helpful, just seems common sense to me, so.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I, Mark, I can share that, if you want to give, I'll email them to you if you want.
I appreciate that.
You know, if you just do a quick search on the CDC and that, the one thing I look at, I like to make it Falmouth-specific, the one thing I have noticed is there has not been as much transmission in the schools as there should have been, with the amount of kids all on top of each other at a typical day. So you don't see, you see it coming into the schools from outside sources, you don't generally see it spreading as much person to person in a classroom with masks. There's things, I agree with you, as, yes, kids and facial expressions, and growing up and missing that is important, I get, I understand what you're saying. I'm breathing into a mask right now, I notice that the inside of my mask is quite wet right now, that droplets didn't leave the mask, they're sitting in here with the condensation. It does, from all intents and purposes, what's the percentage, there's studies that say 1%, there's studies that say on the USS Theodore, there was 70% reduction, there's studies everywhere, there's studies I've seen that you've brought up, so there's studies everywhere that says whether they work or not. I would say that a doctor's not operating on me and going in with me without one of these on for a reason, they've been used for decades to prevent the doctor from giving you MRSA or some other, you know, not to do that way, be more tactile, but, you know, from, from spreading. It's, it's, it was shown to be effective in the 1918 pandemic between, I believe, St. Louis and Philadelphia, if I remember the two cities, and one city was, was rah rah rah, the others kind of shut things down, also had to do a shutdown. I mean, yes, you can make a study show a lot of different things, I say that, you know, there's a certain percentage, I have no idea what that percentage is, because I looked at it before I got here, not knowing that you had asked the question, and you do have low numbers and high numbers. I don't think it increases transmission, it would, generally would decrease, because it keeps the droplets closer to your face than it would be if it spread 10 to 15 feet. So if I'm talking now, at the, and I talk fast, and I talk relatively loud, if I didn't have a mask on, it would, whatever I was coming out, would be reaching them at some point, whereas it's keeping it more into this area. I, I just think it's just, it's just basic, you know, and that's always been my opinion on masks.
And I think, I would say also, at the beginning of the pandemic, when the governor was trying to convince people to wear at least something, there was a lot of flexibility, and he was saying, just at least, you know, if you feel comfortable putting a sock on your face, do it, it's better than nothing, but I think that was unfortunate, because these masks do a lot more than just those little, thin little nylon things, so some of them are too light and don't do a lot.
Well, the reason why we did that at the beginning is there was not enough of these masks to go around, so anything over your face is what they were asking, but yeah, a good mask really matters, I mean, if you can see the emblem on, on the town of Falmouth seal through your mask, it's probably not doing a heck of a lot to, to help you, so yeah, a quality mask is, 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 is good. And they're much more readily available than they were. It helps, I just don't know by what percentage, there's too many studies out there that say too many different things. You know, and that's, you know, and, and, you know, I didn't vote on this, I'm not one of the members of the board, and if that's where the board's conclusion came from, and I'm giving you the information.
Well, we're asked tonight to consider the health and safety of the people that work in town public buildings, and I think that it's our responsibility to consider that, so I'm willing to, we, we've got a motion in a second, so I think we'll take a vote on that.
Mr. Chair, just a, just sort of a thought for the board's consideration, I, I wonder if you might want to take the two ideas separately. So the, the first piece was the town-controlled facilities, and the second piece was advisory to others. They're, just because they're, you know, they're pretty different implications, and for clarity, I wonder if you might want to take one piece at a time.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
I'm certainly willing to change my motion to do just for town-controlled buildings, and it's the inside, not the outside, is, is being recommended, so I'll make that my motion.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, and so we have a motion in a second, to put mask requirement on indoor town-owned building facilities. And Rolko?
Scott, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English, Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you, Mr. McGann, I appreciate that.
Second motion, to encourage private entities to also-
Consider?
Consider having masks worn in their buildings, that we would, as a board, we would encourage private entities to do that. We would, as a board, we would encourage private entities to do that.
Just an encouragement, we can't force them, I don't think, and I don't think I'd want to go there anyway, because we don't want to hurt anybody's business if they feel like they are better off without it, that's up to them, and then people have the freedom to shop where they please.
Right, right.
I agree with Nancy, we have no way to enforce it.
Right.
So I put out the motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Frogger, aye.
And Brown, aye.
And by the way, I see a lot of realtors along Main Street having a mask recommendation on their doors as you get in, so I think the private industry recognizes the importance of this as a step.
They'll have to make their own decision. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
This might be something that comes up, and I don't know that he'll be able to answer it tonight, but I hope that he might at least look into the answer. So today, Mass of Commonwealth released this VAC site, where your vaccine records were now going to be available to you, and you would get a QR code, and that's in line with a lot of countries now requiring that we have something like that to show. So I went to mine, and it turns out that my booster from early November is not listed. And when I called the Walgreens store and asked about it, they were very flustered and didn't know what to do, and told me to call the 800 number, and when I called the 800 number, they told me if I wanted to file a complaint, I could, or otherwise just go get my records from the Walgreens store. So it's a very bad situation. And I was also told by that Walgreens that I was not the first call, and they were obviously caught off guard and didn't know what to say to do. So I hope that somebody will look into if all your vaccines aren't correct on your record, what you can do about it and how you go about correcting it, because I also got something today from a travel company telling me to make sure that you realize that in the future there were going to be countries requiring that QR code to get in, and so it's important to anyone thinking to do that. And I just returned from a place where masks are required everywhere, in every building. Nobody questions it, everyone walks in and out totally fine, wearing a mask, and there wasn't one problem, and people were just glad to be there and be able to be wearing a mask.
Thank you. I told you I wrote it on a paper bag and a crayon, which your vaccine was. Yeah, again, it's hard for me to control what pharmacies are doing, we really have no control over. And, you know, I've had some people call me and say that they were given a Moderna code, but they had Pfizer. It's hard for me to fix things from the private sector, I really, I can't. I mean, we can, I can make the same calls you're making, you know, we call the different areas, but they really, I mean, they're in the business to do that, it really shouldn't be messing up your number, they should have given it on your card. Did you give them the original card?
I just called and gave them everything.
So if you had the first two, you should get the other one. Some of them handwrite, some of them have stickers, we usually use stickers. Yeah, I mean, you know, when you're giving out a million doses of vaccine, if you have an error rate of 1%, that's still a lot of people that need some stuff fixed. So I'd keep, I would say the squeaky wheel gets the oil and keep going on it. I mean, there's really not much I can do from the Health Department, I mean, it's really the private, they get it directly from the feds, they, you know, I don't really have any more pull than anybody else would on it.
Okay.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
I don't know any, I just learned this the other day, I have never seen them, but the home test kits, and I don't know how they're labeled, what the warnings are on them, but the reagent that's used in the kit is a chemical called sodium azide, and it's highly toxic, in contact with the skin and in ingestion in young children is definitely fatal. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows to read the directions and be careful with those, because they do, there is a danger, definitely, and that's sodium azide, I believe, A-Z-I-D-E. Look it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if it does have it in there, that's not good stuff, that's like methyl ethyl death. But yeah, I mean, definitely going to follow it and definitely wouldn't want your kids anywhere near that reagent when you did it.
Okay.
Okay, guys?
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Next is discussion of adopting the budget and sending it to the Finance Committee. Anybody have last thoughts or considerations on the budget?
Oh, I have.
Same.
I only.
Megan, anything from you on the budget?
No, my question's for Andy.
Only last question I have is how will we advertise the beach commission, the beach positions? I know Jennifer Mullen spoke last week about the fact that there's some flexibility in the hiring, and will they just generally say beach position advertisement, and then aid to be discussed as qualified, you know, has anybody thought about that? I'm just curious if there's, how that would be approached.
With regard to lifeguards, we talked about a bonus system, and we'll be noting that in the advertising.
Okay.
To encourage, to encourage responses. And I believe we'll be talking about the range, not emphasizing the starting amount.
Okay.
Because as we've said, there's a range available, and we can slot qualified people anywhere in that range.
Okay.
As long as we're consistent internally.
That was my, actually, my follow-up question to yours was advertising that range, and that also gives the hiring group the flexibility to figure out the step at which they want to hire within that range. Thank you.
Based on the individual's qualifications, of course. Okay, then, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve and send this budget to the Finance Committee?
So moved.
A second. I'll give it to Andy.
Sorry.
Okay, so all in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Frogger, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Status report on Fresh Pond well and PFAS issues. Mr. Cahal.
Yeah, we have Cahal O'Brien with us, our Water Superintendent, and Peter McConerty, Public Works Director as well.
Good evening. So as a brief Fresh Pond well update, the project is coming in on schedule, the bids will be opened by the Air Force jointly with the Army Corps of Engineers Rapid Response Program this Friday, the 14th. They've sent out a draft notice of the scope of work, and then you may have seen, I know the Air Force has been sending out their communications directly from them, is that they're just giving a public notice of what they want to do. What they want to do in Falmouth, you probably already know, but just for the public's sake, there are four water services, there are four homes that have wells, they're going to be tied into town water with town plumbing permits, and they'll be getting new service, they'll be our customers going forward by the end of the project, which is still on schedule for April, May. And then at Fresh Pond itself, they will do as we had already designed, which is a temporary treatment system using a, an ion exchange resin, which removes out the PFAS as well as perchlorate. There is some issue legally relative to what gets removed and doesn't, but thank goodness the town had already submitted the two pilot studies and got a permit from DEP, so we were able to successfully work, collaborate with the Air Force and the Army Corps of Engineers. They are sometimes reluctant when it gets into multiple different contaminants, but because the town was proactive by about two years, there was no argument. They said, oh, you already have a permit, the Town of Mashpee's working as well with them, and it's going well, but they don't have a permit, so we're actually right on schedule, and we haven't had to change any of our needs or requirements for our customer, or you're our customers. So it's going very well, we anticipate that once the bids are opened Friday, the Air Force will brief us on that, they usually communicate once a week with us. They're going to pay our consulting engineer, they're going to pay for all the equipment that we required or requested, they're also going to give us the town payment for operations and maintenance, which includes some general estimated costs, which is going to be electricity, chemicals that are going to be used to treat the water, and some of our prorated staffing. Obviously, our staff monitor all the wells and the treatment plant, so there isn't a way to exactly pick one staff member's salary, but we're very, we're cautiously optimistic that they're going to reimburse us for all our expenses, and it's up to a five-year commitment. We have engineers' estimates that it should be about two years of temporary treatment. We hope to have it around that, two and a half years, but the Air Force has committed, the first year the Army Corps pays for it, and the subsequent four years should be paid by the Air Force. There should be no cost to the town whatsoever, the way it's been collaboratively put together, other than just our sweat equity, but we always anticipated, we've always run that well ourselves anyways. So as the licensed operators and our chief operators here tonight, just to watch and in support of the project, is we're all qualified, fully licensed, and able to operate that facility on behalf of the Air Force and the Army Corps, which keeps the town in the driver's seat, which makes us feel a little bit more confident. If there's anything to be adjusted, we'll, they will do the adjustments.
Right.
So it's nice, it's a positive project, and going forward, when the permanent solution comes in, we've added everything the town over the years, going back several iterations, has wanted, and we won't say too much, other than we're, if this temporary treatment goes the way it was designed and intended, and the way our staff want to run it, then we're looking forward in the next five years to come with some really good news, in terms of sustainability and redundancy in the system. One of our goals is to get Fresh Pond online and boost its capacity through different methods and different wellfields, and so that we can someday get to a point where, in the off-peak season, we have equal water that we can produce, either Fresh Pond or the four groundwater sources, and the supplement from the base at MMR, so that at any given point, the plant's five years old now, so there's some O and M, we've had to replace some equipment, and thank you for supporting the budget, we're going to put a little bit more into O and M. I guess as the metaphor would go, is the tires are going to be replaced, we have the 100,000 mile warranty, but there's some things you've got to do on your own, you've got to do your own oil change type stuff. If we keep up with that, and we get redundancy in the system, it's going to allow the town to be able to make needed repairs at the 10-year birthday, the 15-year birthday, up until the 20-year engineer's lifespan of the facility, and that's when it gets retooled, it doesn't get rebuilt. This is a real windfall for the town, and it's, thank you for all of you, what you did and the town people did pushing it, because being able to sit down with the federal government and hand them permits and pilots and studies and measurable data that's repeatable, completely changes the culture, the context of the discussion. So we're very grateful at DPW for what you all supported, because it's paying back big time in dividends. And if we can keep doing that and then sustain the way we pull water, we'll be back asking for the odd even again, just to be sustainable. You know, this is going to be, we hope, a big piece of our sustainability as a water system for the town for the next 15-plus years.
And a model for what's coming for the future.
Yeah, we hope so. I mean, we, by having an automated grade four facility, we're one of the most innovative, and I come from other grade four facilities on the mainland, we're all very envious of what Falmouth did, because we have a shortage of operators and we have a shortage of water. The way Falmouth has redesigned itself and ordered back five years ago, you all now have the model for what should be, which is a facility that balances quality staff with quality equipment, so you can maximize the value of the operators we can retain, but you also have something that's sustainable and has redundancy and a little bit of automation. That also helps with the withdrawal, it keeps our withdrawal stable and stagnant, and with projects like Fresh Pond, it lets us give Long Pond a break, kind of balances a seesaw, and makes our withdrawal more reliable, and when things are reliable, we can fine-tune, and it makes the water quality better. So we can hopefully reinvest in replacing some water made now that we're starting to see these pieces fit into place. So, thank you.
Good. I have one question, anybody have board questions? All right.
Thank you.
I have one question about the ongoing tracking of the plume, is the Air Force going to be putting in more wells or making use of wells that they have in existence? Do you know anything about that?
They haven't given us all the exact details, I think after this point, this shows they're going to probably do whatever they need to, to keep expanding and tracking it, because the way it was presented to us in writing is that they're committed to closing out every active withdrawal within the plume, so we're led to believe that means they're going to monitor that plume, so that if anything additional occurs, that changes their boundary conditions. So they have an active presence, they have a five-year renewable lease at the treatment facility at the Schumit well, that's part of our long-term solution at Fresh, so at the very least, they're going to redouble their efforts at that piece of the plume. But with the amount of, if you look at the draft that just came out today via email, and I think that, I believe it's been sent to all of you, and if it hasn't, we at DPW send it, it looks like they're spending well upwards in town of over $2 million, so they're going to keep those wells they have running and probably put in what else would be needed, depending on how those track. You know, if they don't see any increase, they'll be good, but they're putting a very respectable amount of money into the town, so I don't expect, we don't expect them to be going away anytime soon.
But that must be $2 million now, but that's not the, that's not the total.
No, no, that's just one year, that's, it's, well, of the cost of the temporary.
Because the permanent facility must be at least a few million by itself, right?
Absolutely. We are hoping to recreate what we have at Kunamasa Crooked, so that would be several million dollars of a building with facilities and everything else. That would be the ideal, a baby sister to Kunamasa Crooked.
Okay, good.
So, but yeah, you're exactly right, you're going to double the digits, if you will, the two will go closer to 10, but that's, they're committed, so I don't believe they'll go anywhere.
Great, great, good news, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Duffy.
Frank Duffy, Town Council, I'm just going to take this opportunity to just remind the public that this board authorized us to join the multi-district litigation against manufacturers and distributors of the PFAS chemicals. And in accordance to your instructions, we have done that through a consortium of attorneys. There's multi-district litigation pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of South Carolina, okay? And we have a claim filed, which was claimed, filed during the month of December, so we're pursuing this problem on several different fronts at the same time, and we will coordinate my office and the Water Department to see what we can do for the town, okay?
Okay, great. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Congressman Bill Keating for his intervention with the, requesting the Air Force to take over this. I mean, it was not the Air Force's original problem, it was more likely another one of the military entities out on the base, but Mr. Keating, knowing that the Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence is the ones to turn to, he did that and was very successful, and so I'm thankful to him and also to the Air Force for taking over something that they didn't really have to, and good neighbor policy, so thanks for that.
It's also benefited the other neighboring towns, Mashpee and Sandwich.
Certainly right. Next, we have Interview, Vote, and Appoint Committee Members of Human Services Committee, Tanya Kohli? Tanya, hello, welcome. Would you like to come up and tell us why you would be interested to do this?
Yes, hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Just barely.
So, good evening, everyone, my name is Tanya Kohli, I am the Director of Prevention and Screening at Aid Support Group of Cape Cod. We have offices in Falmouth, we have offices in Hyannis and Providence, we also have a mobile unit, which serves the community here in Falmouth. I started working here at Aid Support Group early this year, well, early last year in February, and I have, I oversee the harm reduction program. Through our harm reduction program, we offer overdose prevention education, trainings to the community members, we distribute Narcan to the community members, we do a lot of education about reducing the number of sexually transmitted infections, HIV, hepatitis C, and also we have, we have our serine services program through, which we offer out of our mobile van unit. The reason why I wanted to sit on the committee is because I have, before I was at Aid Support Group, I worked with a local substance use treatment center for three years, and I have a lot of experience working in the community. I moved to Falmouth in 2017, and before that, I have had seven years of experience in mental health, serving the community up in Canada, I'm from, originally from Vancouver. But yeah, this opportunity came, Deb Bergland, who actually sits on the committee, she recommended my name, because she knew that of my background and the work that I've done, and I thought it was a really good opportunity for me to bring my expertise and my experience and build a collaboration between different health and human agencies within the Falmouth community, and overall, you know, serves unmet needs of the community, so that's why I'm here, to request to see if I can have this opportunity to sit on the Falmouth Human Services Committee.
That sounds like a very good background and a good, indeed, good fit for this position, so thank you.
Yeah, you have a great resume, and I would move to appoint Tanya Kohli to the Human Services Committee with a term that ends 6/30/2024.
Second.
Thank you.
And all those in favor?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Frogger, aye.
And Brown, aye. So thank you for your...
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for the volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer. And next, we have Interview, Vote and Appoint Committee Member for Steamship Authority Board of Governors, Peter James Jeffrey. Welcome, Mr. Jeffrey, Attorney Jeffrey, I should say.
Good evening, um, I'm Peter Jeffrey and, uh, with the encouragement of Catherine Wilson and, um, Catherine Bumpus, I'm applying to be the Falmouth Rep on the Steamship Authority Board of Governors. Uh, I'm a DC licensed federal unemployment law attorney, uh, and although my law practice is based in Washington DC, I have the good fortune of, uh, living in Falmouth and raising my family here, my wife, Janine, who's originally from here, and our twin children, Ann and Peter. I think my real interest in the, in the Steamship Authority kind of starts and begins with being a neighborhood member of the Resilient Woods Hole Steering Committee, which is the public-private partnership looking at and reading for the impacts of climate change in Woods Hole. Living in this maritime town, relying on our working ports, it's, it's inescapable, the impact of climate change and I'd like to take what I'm learning for and contributing with that resilient steering Woods Hole Committee, uh, as well as my problem-solving skills as an attorney to serve on the Board of Governors as the Falmouth representative.
Great, and I really appreciated the letter that you wrote explaining your understanding of the balance between the two aspects of the position and that, really good to hear that, so thank you.
I move the, the appointing of Peter James Jeffrey to the Steamship Authority Board of Governors, unexpired term ending 12/31.
Second.
Sorry that it's ending soon, you'll have to come back briefly to re-up with us, but, uh, I suspect that'll be successful. So, uh, you have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
God Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English Frog, aye.
And Brown, aye, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion on the disposition of police department weapons and, welcome, Chief Dunn. So if we could, so there was been some talk from, a lot of emails from the public concerned about the fact that the guns are going to be, uh, wish they could be destroyed, but we've realized that we can't destroy them, Town Council's advised us of that, and then we had, uh, consideration of possible other options, maybe we could have a program where we put out an RFP to other police departments, if we could transfer these guns to police departments rather than back into the general market. So, did you want to?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Richard Dubey, Blacksmith Shop Road, you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is disposal of property, but this is a unique type of property and I think the board has to have an understanding of what this property is before you can make a, a true determination. Um, and I'm going to give you a really brief history of the AR-15 so that you understand what we're dealing with. This is, this is not a, a front loader or a pickup truck. Um, the AR-15 was designed by a gentleman named Eugene Stoner under contract to the US government. He was with a company named Armalite at the time. The need for the weapon was, um, we were involved in a conflict in Vietnam. The NBA, North Vietnamese Army and Viet Cong had a weapon that was manufactured in Russia, the Kalashnikov AK-47. We were armed at the time with the M-14. As a matter of fact, I served in Southeast Asia and I carried an M-14. Um, our government decided that we needed something to counteract the AK-47. Bids were put out, Armalite came forth with a product, the AR-15. The AR-15 fired a 223 round. Um, the AR-15, the, um, basic description is of an AR-15, what it's, what its primary purpose is, is basically to kill or wound as many people as possible as quickly as possible and then be able to reload as rapidly as possible and do it over again. That was what our government wanted for our military. The AR-15 was designed as a military weapon, never intended for civilian use, never. Um, what happened was the Air Force bought a number of AR-15s, but other branches of the service didn't quite like the 223 round, so they looked for something else. Stoner went back to the drawing board and came up with the M-16, chamber for the, the 5.56 round, which is the M-16 that came into service in Vietnam, still with us in service, the M-16. Armalite was having financial troubles, Colt bought Armalite and as such bought the AR-15. The early AR-15s that were sold by Colt actually had the Armalite brand on them. Colt got the contract for the M-16s and hundreds of thousands of M-16s, but they had all the tooling, everything needed for the AR-15. Being a company that is profit-driven, what do we do with the AR-15s? They turned to the civilian market. Now, they didn't want to market it as an AR-15, they thought perhaps it would have a bad connotation. So Colt first marketed the AR-15 as the Colt Sporter, S-P-O-R-T-E-R, sort of a harmless sounding name, might be a gun you would see in boys' life. It was the AR-15. The AR-15 is a platform, it's a, it's a designing feat that, um, automatically ejects spent rounds, loads new rounds into the firing chamber for a rifle. Many, many weapons today are, are constructed on the AR-15 platform, but the AR-15 was at no time intended for civilian use, it just came that way because Colt took advantage of the fact there was no law against it. That's the gun that we're thinking of turning back to a private market. And in doing so, we're basically saying that the town of Falmouth is taking a gun that was originally designed for the military and we are going to trade it in, that, that gun will go to the vendor, the vendor will then resell it. And in essence, Falmouth is saying, our hands are clean, we, we, we did what we, we could do. What happens to that gun afterwards, we have absolutely no control over. So basically what we're doing as a town is we're acting as distributors for AR-15s. And when you stop to think about it, that's not the Falmouth that I live in, it just isn't. And I understand Town Council's, um, advice and opinions on this, I have no problem with that, I have absolutely no problem with Chief Dunn getting his, his new rifles. I approved the budget when I went to town meeting, I, I thought the budget was fine, um, it was something that the chief needs, um, but as far as the disposition of the old rifles, I think we have a moral obligation to find another route to take for disposing of these weapons, other than simply turning them back to unknown sources. And please remember, regardless of, of what we think about the Second Amendment, this has nothing to do with the Second Amendment, but regardless of what we think about firearms and if, and if members of the board have not handled firearms or are not familiar with firearms, we're taking an extremely powerful and lethal weapon, one of the most lethal ever created as a matter of fact, and we're selling it. That's what we're doing, make no mistake about it, we are selling these guns. And when I say sale, there is a commodity and there's a value placed on it and it changes hands based on that, that's a sale. So we are in the market of selling these guns to the open market. I don't think that's what we want for Falmouth, I think there has got to be another route that we can take to get Chief what he needs and that's going to take place no matter what happens to these rifles. The budget approved 86,000 or some odd dollars for new rifles, that's going to happen, the chief will get his new guns. What we do with the old ones is a moral responsibility and somewhere we have to be able to work to find a solution that reflects the moral values of, of Falmouth, reflects the moral values of this board and reflects the moral values of most of the citizens and has absolutely no negative impact on the police department. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to, or should I ask the chief?
Well, I think it'd be helpful to have, um, the, the chief work with, um, Mr. Duffy and, uh, we also have a sergeant with us that has handled procurement of weapons, um, in, in terms of the process, I think it would, uh, be helpful to have a summary, I think in, in essence, the board may have seen that, um, Attorney Duffy indicated that the only viable option for the town is to trade them in. I know he's been in touch with the Attorney General's Office, um, and, uh, the, the town has very limited options, uh, in terms of what is available to us under the law.
Right.
That is law that's set at the state level, not here locally in the town of Falmouth, so, uh, Frank, do you want to comment a little further on that?
Mr. Duffy, please.
Um, Frank Duffy, Town Council, uh, let me start off by saying that, um, there is no particular transaction, uh, scheduled at this present time. The chief, this, there was a town meeting action which appropriated about $86,000 for the purchase of new weapons for the fire, for the police department. There are no contracts to purchase new firearms at the present time, there are no contracts that require trade-ins or there are no contracts to dispose of these weapons, so the, all of the issues are, so to speak, on the table right now. Nevertheless, so I am talking to you in terms of general principles and I am guided by the Uniform Procurement Act, which is Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws. Now, the, um, the Uniform Procurement Act covers two things, it covers the purchase of new rifles, but it also covers the disposal of old rifles. So, under 30B, uh, the disposal of surplus, it's called surplus property, is controlled, um, by the Uniform Procurement Act, which controls both purchase and disposal. There are three methods of disposing property depending on its value. One is, excuse me if I made you hesitate this off, um, if it's $10,000 or less, the town may dispose of it according to sound business practices as determined by a policy by the Select Board. Um, excuse me, that's, um, purchasing. If it's worth between $10,000 and $50,000, you have to get three quotes from companies that are in the business of, uh, selling firearms or whatever we're buying. If it's more than $50,000, you have to go through sealed bids, so in the purchase of the new weapons, we will follow that procedure. Now, the second part of this is the disposal of the surplus. Um, and by the way, there is no special provision, I know Mr. Dubey and others would like it to be, but it is not presently, there is no special provision for firearms. They are treated as a commodity just like a used pickup truck or used office furniture. So the law applies equally across the board, doesn't really depend on what the item of surplus property is. First of all, um, you have to determine the value of the property. And you determine the value of the property by aggregating all of the property together, uh, in the particular transaction at its market price. So if you have a firearm that is worth $300, that's one thing, but if you're selling 50 of them, then you have to aggregate the value altogether to determine your thresholds. Now, the chief has determined and has given me information that the aggregate value of all of the firearms to be disposed of is more than $10,000. If you have, um, if you're disposing a, a surplus property that has a value of less than $10,000, the Select Board may have it, may set a policy to determine how this property is to be disposed of, but since we're above that threshold, that really doesn't apply here yet. Now, um, if the value of the property to be disposed of is greater than $10,000, then there are three methods of disposing of it. Um, the first is by sealed bids and the second is by auction. Neither sealed bids nor auction really work very well for the town of Falmouth because our police department, which is, and the town, which is selling these firearms, is not a licensed dealer. So we cannot enter into a private transaction to sell these weapons to anybody. The third option is a trade-in and I am told, uh, and having looked at, at the Inspector General's materials, that trade-ins are allowed as part of the sealed bid or quote process. I also, um, went on to the Massachusetts Municipal, um, Association's website seeking advice from some other communities, I received a communication from the former General Counsel to the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association who told me that most police departments, or fact, practically all police departments, trade in their surplus weapons and the reason they do it is because they're not licensed to sell these weapons. And if you trade them in to a licensed dealer, that licensed dealer can then turn around and resell them on the market, yes, they can be resold on the market, but thereby a licensed dealer who has to comply with federal or state law depending upon where the sale took place. So the, the trade-in is at least presently considered to be the preferable method of disposing of surplus firearms because of your licensing requirements and also because of your liability requirement. Now, there is a possibility, I know, uh, Mr. Brown, you just mentioned, could we have a private sale with another police department? Well, um, a municipal government, the town, is allowed to have a contract with another municipal government or a police department of another municipal government without complying with Chapter 30B, the Uniform Procurement Act. But we come right back to the same problem, we're not a licensed dealer, so we can't really sell them at a private sale. So, uh, I'm just talking now in general terms. Um, it looks to me like the best way to comply with Chapter 30B, the Uniform Procurement Act, is to accept a trade-in. But, because I do not know how the chief intends to buy the new weapons, I do not know how he intends to split up the surplus property to sell it, I really can't tell you which law applies, but that, I'm just speaking in general terms, okay?
Okay. That's a, sure, go ahead.
There's 21, chief, there's 21 rifles? 21 rifles. That would value each rifle at about $500. Um, new rifles sold to police departments are about $850. Um, the open market value that I get because there's such a shortage of firearms in general, because they're, they're, they're just, they're being sold, um, at an alarming rate, is about $400. So we've placed a, a value of $500 on these. I, I have no idea why, they're 20-year-old rifles. Um, when you can buy a new rifle for $850 and it'll last you 20 years, $300 and some odd dollar difference you amortize over 20 years, I mean, why would police departments pay for a rifle, $500 for a rifle and they can buy a new one for $850? So more than likely, these will go to private individuals. As far as the, um, council's point as to just following chapter and verse of the law, I, I agree, I have to, I certainly have to, to, um, to bow to his counsel as far as that's concerned. But, um, the, the fact that the weapons cannot be destroyed is something that I, I, I hope that this body can, can find a way around. I mean, if, if the, if the subsection he's quoting is, is gospel, then it seems to me that that has to be changed. I mean, in essence, what he's saying is we don't have a license to sell firearms, but we can distribute them. And that's basically what we're doing. Am I right in that, in that Falmouth owns these firearms right now?
Yes.
Okay. So we are the owners and we are somehow, once this transaction takes place, not going to be the owners anymore. So whatever that transaction is, whatever you want to call it, that's what's going to happen with these rifles. And unless we act in some way, shape or form to prevent it from winding, these rifles from winding up in private hands, that's probably what's going to happen. So something has to be examined, there, there has to be something creative that can be done to change this.
Yes, Mrs. God Price.
I just want to clarify that what Mr. Duffy spoke about, the chapters, those were Massachusetts chapters, correct? So if those were to be changed, those... So, if those were to be changed, those would have to go through legislature?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a question as well. Can a private citizen purchase a rifle?
Not in Massachusetts.
That's what I...
Not that one.
Okay.
Yes, chief.
The Attorney General, several years ago, Edward Dunn, Chief of Police, the Attorney General, several years ago, working with the Chiefs of Police Association, major cities and mass chiefs, did enact a law that it is illegal for residents in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to buy assault rifles.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Okay, I have two questions. One, is sort of a broader question, like, when we were trying to get clarification on this issue, that the town should have a policy perhaps, and we don't, for the disposition of property under that threshold? So, that's my first question. Is that something that, am I correct that we have never had that? And is that sort of a gaping hole in maybe our policy that we need? And the second is, this is to the chief, is there an objection or a reason why we wouldn't hold on to the guns? I understand the fiscal piece of getting some money back to the taxpayers. Is there any other reason that we wouldn't hold on to them?
Frank Duffy, Town Council, I'm responding to the first question. It's my understanding the town has not adopted a policy on the disposition of property under $10,000.
As far as holding on to the weapons, we'd have to maintain these weapons, we'd have to store them, and at what point would we end up getting rid of them? And right now, we've been following the procurement laws with all the firearms that we've purchased over the years. And it's been the safest and best way to do it, because again, we're dealing with a federally licensed firearm dealer. And I also have, if there's any other questions as far as that, I've brought our firearms instructor, lead firearms instructor Sergeant Guthrie, who can answer some questions too, if you have some more.
I have one more, chief, if I could. Do you think there's any possibility that these guns might add up to less than $10,000? How would we evaluate that more closely?
Until we get, until we come up with a vendor who can give us, you know, quotes on what they're worth, I mean, we, thankfully, as I said, they're 20 years old. They're, they're getting tired. They could fail. We did have a shotgun that just recently failed. So, but we do maintain our equipment very, very well, as far as oiling them and taking them apart. We have armors in the, in the station who go through them. And again, I can have Sergeant Guthrie address that.
Thank you.
Just, well, Sergeant Guthrie's coming up. Can I just, it's a little hard for me here, so I just want to clarify, I'm just doing it with the chief then. We won't know the actual value until we have that process go through, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in some sense, and please, correct me if I have this wrong, in some sense, we may, two weeks from now, I don't know if that timeline is inaccurate, but we may find out these are worth $15,000, or we could hypothetically find out they're worth $8,000. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Benjamin Guthrie, Sergeant, Falmouth Police Department. I just want to reiterate something that Mr. Dubby was talking about, was state law, and Attorney Duffy was talking about state law, Chapter 30B and whatnot. The chief had touched on it also. Chapter 140, 121 is what defines the assault rifle that Mr. Dubby was talking about. 131M is what actually prevents it from being possessed or bought from a private citizen. That's something that's been enacted since 1994, when they put the ban on assault weapons. Our Attorney General put out a notice in 2016 telling all the firearms dealers that they can't do that anymore, especially with the copyright weapons, which he was talking about, the Colt. There are many copyright, copycat, excuse me, copycat weapons out there that model the Colt, and model other assault weapons. The Attorney General made it very clear, and she put out criteria that set forth what the federally licensed firearm dealers can and cannot sell, and what private citizens can and cannot possess. So, the state legislature's already taken this on. They've already determined that the private citizens out there, that, you know, the regular JOKU cannot possess the assault weapon that we're talking about.
But that's just Massachusetts, right?
Is this the pre-ban law, or something like that? I was asked about that yesterday. I don't know what that is. Okay, so...
1994, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's not accurate. You can, or AR-15...
Wait, you need to go to the mic, and you need to control this.
Yeah.
That's not an accurate representation. You can buy a pre-ban, 1990, that's 1994, AR-15 legally in the state of Massachusetts, if you can prove it was manufactured before 1994. These weapons were not manufactured before 1994. So, both gentlemen are correct. These particular weapons cannot be sold in the state of Massachusetts. But AR-15s can legally be sold in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I, I'm going to make a suggestion. I think that we, and I think the debate is important, but I think that we're putting the cart before the horse a bit. We, we're going to have a very difficult choice to make if the bid, you know, if we get some procurement bids that come back, and it's in excess of that $10,000 mark, because we're then bound by the laws of our Commonwealth. So, I guess I would like to have that information in front of us, because we could very well sit here tonight for an hour, come up with a creative way to dispose of these, or have the town hold them, you know, for the foreseeable future, or whatever it might be, and then we figure out that a value is more than that $10,000, and now we're, now we're in violation of what we're required to do, if we're trying to dispose of them. So, I guess I'd like to get a value attached to these that isn't a value that comes from, from us guessing, but something that comes from the actual procurement process. And then, we will know what options are available to us. And I would like, for the future, for us, I do think it's a little bit of a missing piece of policy. We should have a disposition policy. I know a lot of things are going to fall under $10,000, particularly in this day and age, but I don't think it would be that difficult to come up with a policy, see what other communities have, so that we're, you know, we're not back to square one with issues like this, and I'll begin.
Right, I agree. We can put that on a future agenda. So, for today, then, chief, would you maybe just let us know when you find out the value, and then we'll see if there's any latitude for making any other...
Yeah, we'll continue with the procurement process and getting our, getting our bids, and we'll get you some bids on what the actual value, what we're going to get if we were to trade them in.
Okay, and we'll work on...
Get back to you.
We'll work on coming up with some sort of policy of our own for... Yes, please.
One quick question. If we were to have to fall under the Massachusetts law and trade these in, would we sell them, or would we return them back to a Massachusetts licensed gun dealer?
It's going to depend on who we purchased the weapons from.
It could be any state.
Could be.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
I can just make one more note to what Mr. Dubby was saying. The AR-15s that were pre-banned, that he is speaking of, you still can't purchase that after 2016 unless the dealer had it in their possession before 2016. So, in 2016, when the Attorney General put that ruling out to all the dealers, and put them all on notice, if they didn't have that in their stock, currently in their possession in 2016, they can't sell it to a private citizen.
So, it puts a sunset on it.
In Massachusetts. In Massachusetts.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, so we'll find out a little more when we get further into the procurement process. Next, status report on Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution Seawater Project. This was related to a request for support of a grant for that project, I believe? Is that right? I think they wanted us to send a letter of some sort to support that?
We've already gone on, the board has already voted in support of this project. This just came up with a question about Conservation Commission review of a permit to allow the project to go forward under our local floodplain regulations.
Oh, okay.
Jennifer's prepared to comment and give you a status report on that.
Welcome, thank you.
Hello. So, Jennifer Lincoln, Conservation Administrator, and just was asked to give you a brief update of where the permitting stands for the Hui Seawater Project and Seawater stands, and I'm going to cheat here, Complex for Waterfront Access and Exploration and Research. Members of the Hui team are here. Basically, right now, it, the project is before the Conservation Commission. It involves maintenance dredging, reconstruction of their bulkhead, realignment of the bulkhead, reconstruction of their current pile-supported dock, the demolition of several existing buildings, and the construction of a new waterfront building on that facility. I heard someone state, when I was listening downstairs, that, you know, they were learning a lot on the Hui Seawater Steering Committee, which I sit on as well for Hui. It is a working waterfront, and there's a lot of complex issues surrounding this project. Right now, I think we're on hearing number three. We have contracted with a peer review to help the commission review the complex issues surrounding this project, and we are currently scheduled to have an additional hearing. I believe we just asked for a continuance on, they asked for a continuance date for January 19th. If there's any specific questions the board has regarding this project, I can try to answer them for you.
Are there sticking points between what's designed and what's...
Thank you, that's my question.
There are some issues that the Conservation Commission is going to have to deliberate on. One of the sticking points is the construction of the new waterfront building within what's considered the Falmouth's velocity zone. FEMA sets a velocity zone, and then Falmouth sets a 25-foot offset to that. They've had that in place for the regula, that has been in the regulations since, oh, I want to say that was even in the '98 regulations when they were redrafted in 1998. Currently, I mean, the whole project is a vast improvement from what's down there. Currently, there's 4,200 square feet of existing building within our Falmouth velocity zone. That is going to be reduced to about 1,500. But it's still in that 25-foot offset zone. That provides kind of a deliberation, or not a sticking point, but a concern with what Falmouth will be going through shortly with FEMA to join the community rating system. The community rating system is an incentive program through FEMA to provide percentages off federally, federal flood insurance. There's an entire, an exhausting list of criteria the town is going to be weighed against, and assigned points or credits for certain floodplain management practices that we meet. One of the good things about Falmouth Wetland Regulations, I think they're all good, but plus, is that we have this 25-foot offset. And the board has consistently applied V-zone construction standards in that 25-foot offset. Now, we have to remember that the regulations were, you know, not, you can't write a regulation for everything, and I don't think when the regulations were written, they were envisioned a complex project such as the Seawater Project. So, the board has some, you know, considerations to make. It's this Hui's team that they, they meet that regulation, and that's something the commission will need to weigh.
So, would it be accurate to say that what's designed is in line with state wetlands standards, but not...
Yes.
Quite meeting Falmouth's because they're more stringent?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, it's a vast improvement from what's down there currently.
More questions? And so, is there any way of knowing if we're going to be injured by this approval with the rating system?
It's an unknown. I mean, again, there's an exhaustive list of criteria that the town, you know, that we're going to work through with FEMA. I can tell you that, you know, we are going to, regardless of the Hui Seawater Project, we are going to have some troubles, not troubles, but issues that we're going to need to work through for FEMA. But FEMA is willing to work with communities to correct floodplain management practices and issues that they find. They're currently working with a nearby Cape community. They've been with that community, I think they're going on year three, but COVID is kind of delayed and stopped work. But they've worked with a nearby community to kind of correct some practices, and, you know, the incentive is that the communities work with FEMA to provide the percentages off of the federal flood insurance.
Could you give any kind of clue as to what type of practices they're addressing? Is it like...
Also, the list is exhausting, and I don't have that in front of me, I apologize.
A town-wide view?
Town-wide, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
They're going to come in, they're going to look at the building records. They're going to look at all the building things. We're going to, you know, FEMA's going to drive along the coastline. There's a number of different things.
How you manage your permitting in your velocity zone and so forth?
Simple things like even sheds in a velocity zone. So, it's, it's an exhaustive list. One I am very excited to go through.
Is there anything for us to do in this, at this time?
I was just asked to provide an update, so...
Okay.
I'm not looking for, I don't think the Conservation Commission is looking for anything. I just think we're just wanted to provide an update.
I appreciate that. Yes, sir.
I just want to mention that the, that getting this classification means that every private property owner that needs flood insurance will benefit from a lower premium, and that's one of the reasons that we're doing that.
If it happens.
If it happens, right. We have to qualify as a municipality, but the benefit extends to private owners, in the floodplain area.
But at the same time, Hui's a valued partner in the community, and if there's any way we can give a little more latitude to help them achieve their project, I would certainly like to, at the risk of endangering our community rating statistics, because they could just be dangling a carrot out there that we might never quite get anyway.
And just to give the board some perspective, it's a nationwide program. Massachusetts, I think I wrote to you, there's two communities nationwide that meet the maximum percentage, which is 45%. We are, that, we are never going to get there. The average community savings in Massachusetts is 10%.
That's still something.
That's based on a lot of different factors that are outside the town's control.
Right. And so, is there any way to reach out to the authorities of the community rating system and ask them if we're going to be damaging ourselves, or is it just on us to just assume it?
We're in contact with the county, who is our, you know, kind of coordinator with this, and it's, you cannot quantify it.
Right.
They've been working with us, it's, it's an unknown.
Okay. Yes?
Is there ever precedent, we have a not-for-profit research, oceanographic research institution that we're talking about here, where they have made an exception for such a facility, understanding that it's in the public good? Have they ever made an exception for a situation like this that you know of?
I don't know the answer for, regarding the community rating service, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that Hui is actively in conversations with FEMA regarding their projects, so they have an active, open line of communication with FEMA. I mean, this is just, it's a program, we're waiting for them to finish up with the city of Boston, and, you know, we were supposed to have our review over two years ago, but because of COVID, that was delayed. And I'm told through the county that potentially, hopefully FEMA will be within the town within the year to start that review project, and it's a lengthy review.
Okay, right. Well, hopefully, the commissioners will just appreciate the fact that the building is smaller and it's improved, right? Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to repeat Jen's comment. We have representatives from Hui who we have been working with on this project, and as, as I noted, the board voted many months ago to support this Seawater Initiative, which has been underway, and several of us have been, as Jen noted, myself included, meeting as part of the community, community support and community input for this Seawater process. I don't know if our colleagues at Hui would have any comment, but they are here in the event that they might. I appreciate Jen's comments and clarification at this point.
Would you be interested in making any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I prepared something for tonight, just in case you asked.
We need you to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry.
You need to introduce yourself.
I will, I will. Thank you. So my name is Leslie Ann McGee, and I am the institution's program manager. I'm responsible for the day-to-day management of all aspects of this project design and also executing it. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to give a very brief update on the status. We didn't come with images and pictures, but we thought we'd just, it's coming back to you soon, so.
Okay.
And we'll get there when we do. But I also like to think, thank Jen Lincoln, not only for her permitting update she gave tonight, but also she's been, her and her office have been extremely collaborative and productive on our notice of intent application. That's been for the Conservation Commission, as she mentioned, for quite a while now, since August. I'd also like to thank Chairman Matthews of the Conservation Commission and the rest of the commission for their meticulous work on this project. It is a very complex project. As you know, the Conservation Commission is just one of many of the town of Falmouth boards that we will require review for this project. In fact, it is worth noting that the project will come back to you for a special permit, so our team will be presenting additional details when we get to that point of the process. The project before the commission or seawater, which we, you know, aptly named, stands for the Complex for Waterfront Access to Exploration and Research. And we have to say that it's important to note that this product is existential to the institution. It'll ensure that our 92-year-old history of our access to the sea, a resource critical to what we do, will continue. Since our founding in 1930, our working waterfront has, has had several configurations. The current incarnation has been in place for 52 years and has served the institution very well. For the last 10 years or so, the pier has approached the end of its design life of 50 years, requiring us to make multimillion-dollar investments every year in repairs to allow us to continue the pursuit of our mission. Engineering and economic analysis performed since 2016, with some funding from the Commonwealth and in partnership with the town, of course, through the Seaport Economic Council, have made it clear that the dock must be replaced, which we now plan to do with modern technology and also with technology that is adaptable to the impacts of climate change, which is very important to us. Are you okay, sir? Okay. I don't want to ignore someone who might be choking. Our, our motto is "Our Ocean, Our Planet, Our Future." The Woodsol Oceanographic Institution is dedicated to research and education to advance the understanding of the ocean and its interaction with the earth's ecosystem, and to communicate this understanding for the benefits of society. To service this mission, our almost three-acre working waterfront is an active port and a research facility, the launchpad and work zone for our efforts to help explore and understand the world's oceans. We not only birth and support the Navy-owned, Hui-operated global-class research vessels, shown in that picture, the Atlantis and Neil Armstrong, our coastal research vessel, Tyoga, which was out to sea that day that that picture was taken, in December, I note, because we're a year-round operation, and many small boats. The pier also provides a scientific and testing platform for new technologies such as autonomous underwater robots, aquaculture technologies, and wind energy initiatives, just to name a few. So it's essentially itself is not only a port for vessels, but it's actually a scientific platform in itself. Each year, we rec, we welcome dozens of research vessels. We collaborate on science and engineering expeditions from many outside institutions and partners, and we serve a very important role for the U.S. Navy and the Department of Homeland Security's national security goals through our work. We all employ over 1,000 scientists, engineers, technicians, seafarers, and administrators, and we host over 400 affiliates, including graduate students in our joint PhD program with MIT, postdoctoral scholars, undergraduate interns, and guest investigators. Annually, based on a recent study done by UMass Donahue Institute, the activities specifically just on our waterfront, just that go through that pier, contribute over $50 million to the local and regional economy. So since 2017, when we launched the seawater project, Hui has made a commitment to leading by example on all fronts. We take our responsibility to our mission, to our community, and to our environment very seriously. This project is complex, as Jen had noted. We endeavor to design a new facility in nearly the exact configuration as the current facility, and in a manner that plans for projected sea-level rise, increasing frequency intensity of storms, and also nuisance flooding. We strive to deliver an entirely new working waterfront using best practices and meeting the goals set forth by federal, state, and local regulations. We are 18 months into our permitting and regulatory process already, which has been very enlightening for us. The regulatory regime is complex, and in some cases does not support resilient solutions, or solutions with the least environmental impact, and it's something we have to navigate. In part, so that we can ensure that the institutional and community climate planning needs were coordinated, and that active progress could be made. In 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic, which we didn't know at the time, we launched the Resilient Woods Hole effort, which has been noted tonight, in partnership with MBL and NOAA. The importance of this initiative was recognized by the Commonwealth with the award of a Massachusetts Coastal Resiliency Grant recently to support the planning efforts of all stakeholders in the Woods Hole Village. And you've noted, some folks here tonight are actually on our Resilient Woods Hole Steering Committee. We know, in, at the very basic level, we are all in this together. So to this end, with our many consultations with FEMA, as Jen has been party to, the Barnstable County Floodplain Coordinator, Conservation Staff, Peer Reviewers, our community representatives, we now better understand the impacts all development has on the prospective programs that could benefit the town's property owners. To this end, during our many consultations, we better understand this, and we are going to rise to this challenge. We'll continue to work diligently and creatively to deliver a win-win-win for Hui, the community, and the environment to the best of our ability. So we ask for your patience and trust that we will continue to lead by example on delivering a high-quality redevelopment project that ensures our contributions not only to the world's understanding of our oceans, but also to the community in which we reside. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good, thanks. Okay. Are there any questions? I think we've got it for now.
Catherine Bumpus?
Yes, please.
Thanks, Leslie Ann. It was great to hear that this is going to be a win-win-win for all of us, because I think that's really important. I'm Catherine Bumpus. I'm a Woods Hole resident, property owner, taxpayer in Falmouth, and I pay flood insurance. And I was completely unaware of this issue until it was raised at a Concom hearing. And Jen has graciously given me more information on it, and one of the things is, it's an unknown. I would love to save 10% on my flood insurance. I think that that would be a real benefit. And having a project that Hui is presenting as a leadership comply with the local regulations would be a benefit for the community also. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Anybody else, public questions? Okay, I guess we'll move on to EverSource Status Update.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Brown.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Mr. Suso and Mr. Johnson Staub, thanks for having us here before you again. We're here for a status update. I'm Ronique Goldstein, for those that don't know me, Community Relations for EverSource Energy, and I'm accompanied by a team of folks from EverSource, whom you may have met either virtually or in person. I have our project manager for the project that we're going to update you on, Katie Cook, Terry Forsanger from our Rights and, excuse me, Permitting Department. Also in the audience, we have Alexia Kaploski from our Outreach Group, we call them Project Services, and Andrea Burton as well, from Project Services. We're here tonight to give you a brief update on the work that we've done and the good interactions that we've had with the Bike Path, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, as well as your town management, to have some discussions, and DPW, who's also here, Peter McConerty, in the audience, about the project. So with that, I'm going to pass, since our update on the 20th, I believe, that's, that's the purpose of tonight, is just to give you a little bit of a status update. I'm going to pass, the first pass to Terry Forsanger to give you a brief update. We had a very productive and positive meeting with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee last Wednesday, January 5th. And then to follow, Katie Cook, our project manager, will give you a brief update on the discussion with town management about some mitigating measures that would be, you know, good for the town, that would be beneficial for the residents for the town of Falmouth. So with that, and then we'll take any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks.
With that, I'll pass it to Terry.
Thanks, Ronique. Good evening, members of the board.
Good members.
We did have, as Ronique said, a very productive meeting with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee last week. This is the third meeting, two at the regular meetings, and then we had a, a previous one last month with the subcommittee. We, we shared some rendering, some visuals of a redesigned duck bank and manhole configuration, taking the feedback that we had gotten from the previous two meetings. We put pen to paper again and, and took another pass at it. And that collaboration really, really resulted in, in a better project, not only for the Bike Path and pedestrian, and users of the Bike Path, but also for the company as well. So that was a really good collaborative effort. We received some more feedback, and we continue, and we will, we are looking forward to additional future meetings throughout the life of the, the project, meeting with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, as well as others, members of the town. We've been, we, we're advancing our survey right now. We'll have survey at the end of this month, and then engineering will be able to overlay a design, and then we'll be working with Peter and other members in the, in the town, other officials as well, on refining that. We'll have scalable plans at that point. So there'll be much more to come, but we've made significant progress over the last three months, and discussed some improvements that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee would like to see, which are very much aligned with what we're hearing from town officials as well. So a lot has happened over the last three months, and Katie can talk about some of the mitigation conversations that we've had. Katie?
Good evening. As Ronique and Terry mentioned, we did have a meeting late last week with town officials to discuss mitigation items that could be part of this project that would be beneficial for the town of Falmouth. And I, I thought it was a great positive start to this discussion, and Mr. Suso, Mr. Johnson Staub, and Mr. McConerty, excuse me, were all there to help with that discussion and kind of get the, get it started. Several items were discussed, and we do recognize that the most important item that was brought up, and I believe it was brought up at the last Select Board meeting that Ronique and Terry presented at, and Chairman Brown was gracious enough to go out and get utility poll numbers and photos of everything, but along Palmer Ave, some utility polls that are a bit troublesome in, you know, in the middle of a sidewalk, causing accessibility issues. So we're going to look at each one of those on a case-by-case basis to see what we can do, as well as the other items, bring them back to the team, dive through everything, work with our leadership team, kind of continue the conversation with the town, and, you know, see what we can do. But I'm excited as the project progresses.
Okay. And, you know, a lot of those are double polls, and we did have a discussion a couple of years ago about getting those double polls.
Without you mentioning those double polls.
Sorry.
We will, we will work to address the double polls, and Palmer Ave is, you know, atop our minds, so.
Great. So will we have, like, an agreement prior to town meeting, so that we can all be supportive of, how will we?
So I think specific to town meeting, I don't know if Terry wants to touch base.
So I'll be working, I have been working. Frank has sent us some language, and our town, our council is reviewing it. I'll be providing some comments, if, if he has any, to refine that, so that those are also items that we're trying to button up to.
Okay.
But we're very, very close to that.
Great.
But I think to your general question down there, by the time we get to town meeting, we will have, you know, the items and the mitigation and the discussions kind of flushed out.
Right. So we'll know what we're voting and supporting.
By April, yeah. I think there'll be general consensus that this, you know, that you're ready to move forward.
Great.
I will say that the, the words weren't said specifically by the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. There was a general sense of consensus and good feeling that the path forward and the good faith, you know, the good work and good effort that had been done. I can't recall the specific words that one of the members mentioned, but he.
We took their feedback.
Yeah, they felt heard, and they said that they commended the team for really kind of diving in and making some changes in a very quick turnaround, since we had just met with them for the first time, I believe, in November.
Right.
So, excuse me, in December, because they did not meet in November.
Right.
So we really had a quick turnaround to make some, you know, hear feedback and make some changes, and then present it to them and answer their questions. It was a thoughtful, I think we, we met with them for over an hour last week. It really, we took the time, nobody rushed through it, and we kind of left no, you know, no stone uncovered at that point. And then they know that we will be going back for additional, you know, collective, collective discussions. So it was good. It was a good feeling.
Great, appreciate that.
Hello?
Yes?
Sorry. I, I just am not sure that the EverSource, EverSource folks know this, because your team, you know, has done work like this in other communities, but our town meeting takes, you know, that process and their duty very seriously. So just as to Doug's point, the level of detail and, you know, really the, the sort of certainty in terms of where the process is at and what it will be, will be, I think, very important to town meetings. And so for the success of this project, I think it's just important for all of us to keep that in mind, that a general sketch of a plan, and I know we're already moving past that, but without those details, town meeting tends to not feel comfortable supporting projects.
True. Good point. Thanks. Okay, any other questions for now? Any other comments from staff? For Mr. McConady? Sure, you want to?
Megan may be calling. She may have disconnected.
I don't know. Push the green button. Megan, is that you again?
Yeah, I guess. Did you not like what I said?
Yeah. Better be careful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board, both here, in person, telephonic, and Mr. Suso, Mr. Johnson Staub. My name is Dan Hubbard. I'm the Director of External Affairs and Legal Counsel for Mayflower Wind. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to provide some very brief comments on the EverSource project as it relates to our project. Mayflower Wind is a offshore wind developer. We're committed to develop, to delivering clean, low-cost renewable energy to Massachusetts. To date, we can boast that we have 1,200 megawatts of, of clean energy procured through the state procurement process, and that's, to put that in frame, is, is about 800,000 homes and businesses in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that that would power, and we plan to develop the rest of our lease, which would be upwards of 2,000 megawatts total delivery. Now, we fully understand that our efforts to succeed are really dependent on working here with Falmouth, and, and that's why I'm here tonight. I wanted to sort of talk about collaboration. And as you know, we've been discussing the potential for a whole, whole community agreement with the town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Point of order. If Mayflower is here to comment on the EverSource project, that's obviously appropriate. It sounds like Mr. Hubbard is talking about the Mayflower project, which is not on the agenda tonight?
Good point. Thank you. Okay.
Understood. Okay. So just skip right to the, the chase then. In November of, of 2021, we submitted our EFSB project, our, our EFSB petition, seeking approval for our onshore route. Prior to the submission, we spent months reviewing options, including technical, environmental, and community considerations of potential routes along Surf, Walker, Shore, Worcester, and Central, Central Park. The petition that Mayflower ultimately filed had preferred and noticed alternative routes at Worcester Avenue and Central Park. Now, Mayflower did this after receiving information directly from EverSource that led us to conclude that the routes along Surf and Walker and Shore would not be feasible. We were directly informed by EverSource that due to the location of their existing cables, and the new cable proposed for Martha's Vineyard, that the routes along Surf, Walker, and Shore would not be possible due to concerns of co-location that would result in congestion and would negatively impact reliability and security of the project. EverSource initially stated this in their filing with the DPU in May of 2021 regarding the cancellation of the storage, battery storage project, and the, in favor of the new submarine cable. This was further communicated to us in September of 2021, and also again in December of 2021. As a result, Mayflower submitted its EFSB petition on the direction, on that direction from EverSource. We're open to collaboration with EverSource, as has been requested by the town, but we'd like to highlight that EverSource has been consistent in its message that the co-location in this area would have a negative impact on security and supply, and accordingly, no co-location can be assumed. So of course, in sort of in closing, we wanted to offer that Mayflower respectfully requests that any decision on the EverSource cable contemplates the cable's design any decision on the EverSource cable contemplates the cable's design characteristics that prohibit co-location, and such information in engineering is considered as part of the town's decision. And to enable that, we would ask that EverSource, in order for the town to make a complete decision on that, we would ask that EverSource provide the town with any and all information that the town deems necessary to fully understand that issue. Again, we're here to collaborate with the town of Falmouth, and I appreciate your affording me the time to be heard. And we welcome the opportunity to give a brief in order, in due order, at a future meeting. I apologize if that was out of procedure. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Well, we did get information from EverSource regarding the conflict there, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
So I guess we're good for tonight with the EverSource. Thank you. I don't think so. Just wanted to reinforce that, you know, we really got to nail down the details so that we're ready to go for town meeting, so.
We will, we will. I mean, the town meeting asks specifically to easements, and we understand that folks can't vote on and support and stand behind items that don't have full information. There will be outreach between now and town meeting as well.
And we have really-
At our reference. So there will be community, a significant community outreach.
And we have really heard a lot from members of the Disability Commission about the poles and the sidewalks. So it was, it's really something that's becoming more important, so.
Good.
Okay, so thank you.
We look forward to fulfilling that and kind of checking that off the list as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your work as well on your inventory.
Oh, absolutely, thanks.
Very helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Glad we could catch you out at a reasonable amount.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
And now we have a status update on the old burial ground.
Good evening, Peter McConady, Director of Public Works.
You're welcome.
Here to give an update on the old burial ground for where we're heading, for, see if we can gather some additional information and seeking some of the preservation of some of the headstones and some of the markers. Over the past year, Public Works and Town Manager and Town Council have met to discuss the, basically, all the burial grounds that are under the jurisdiction of Public Works that we maintain in town, basically cutting and trimming and storm cleanup. Since November town meeting, we had an additional conversation and meeting with Town Manager and Town Council. And what came out of the meeting is to, for Public Works to move forward with reaching out to a preservation consultant to gather some more information and get the information that we have more in order to what we have. So I will say that this is a new endeavor for me, for Public Works. It's not for our Parks Superintendent. He does take care of the cemeteries and the burial grounds, but it's a new endeavor for me. What we have done over the last couple of months is we reached out to the original, the original engineering consulting company that the town contracted with back in 1995, and that's with Fannin-Leiner Preservation Consultants, excuse me, in 2005. And what had happened is, at that time, that company had come into town, and they walked through the burial ground, they did an inventory of all the markers of the headstones, the damage of the headstones, they did an inventory of the grounds, an inventory of basically the whole area, and came up with a spreadsheet of critical areas and priority areas, priority areas for the stones to be completed and headstones and markers to be restored and completed. And they came up with a large database plan for that. My understanding is the town, at that time, did not move forward with it. So we're here right now, basically, trying to get it back on track and put it back on, you know, put it back on track where this project will basically be, it'll be put under Public Works. It will not be put under the Parks Department, although Jeremiah will be working with it as far as the preservation-wise with the contractor. His department's very busy with other things right now. So it'll be put under the administration portion of Public Works, myself and Deputy Director. But our goal is to meet with this company, to go out and do another inventory, update the information that we have, pull all the information that they had in years past, pull it all together, gather it together, and come up with a plan to move forward, a cost estimate, a priority plan in years forward. Our understanding is, we did have a conversation with the owners of the company last week, and our understanding is, is there's not a lot of preservation companies in Falmouth, excuse me, in Falmouth and Massachusetts right now that do this work. So these companies are rare, but we're going to work with this company to gather all the information that we can gather, and then we're going to move forward with updating their database, updating the priority plan, and put a schedule together to see what it would cost, a cost estimate, and what it would cost to do this type of work. There's upwards of over 700 stones in that burial ground, and a good portion of them have been damaged by storms and have been damaged just by, you know, by age. So we're looking, we're going to need, the inventory that was done in 2005 did have close to 500, 600 of the headstones inventoried, but there's more now, so we're going to have to inventory it, see what needs to be done. My understanding is the Parks Department, when they work out in that area, if there is a marker or headstone that is damaged, they do pick that up and they put it on pallets, so it's not sitting on the ground, sitting in the ground with the old limestone and the old stone is, it's not good. It just deteriorates it even more. So we're looking to get it off the ground and on pallets. So when we do work, when we do trim and do work and weed whack and cut in those areas, we won't be doing any further damage to them. But our, the schedule was, is that this company was going to come down the beginning of last week, and we were going to walk through the, we're going to walk through the burial ground. With the weather last Monday, they were coming from, out from the western part of the state. They thought there was going to be a lot more snow than we had, so they scheduled it for after Martin Luther King Day, which would be after next week. So hopefully, if the weather stays, weather stays somewhat decent, and we don't have a lot of snow on the ground, we'll be able to continue with this. But our plan is, is over the next several months, we're going to be moving forward with this and gathering more information, so. And we thought, using the original company that came out in the first place that already had all the information, and just updating that information was much better than trying to start back from scratch again.
Great that they're still around.
They're still around. They, it's a, it's a family business. They are still around, they're still in business. But, you know, our understanding is to gather all the information that, from previous years, and put it together with the new information, may take, may take several months to do that.
Right. That's a little bit of a shame. It's been 27 years that we didn't do anything. But, on the other hand, it's good that they did it in 95, because they'll probably be able to bring a lot of information that we wouldn't be able to gather today.
Right.
I think it was 2005. I think Peter corrected.
It was 2005, correct.
Oh, it was.
Right. But there was some work done in the 1990s. I think the article by Ann Sears in the spit sale, that was done in 1995. So we're gathering information. We have information over the years from our previous Parks Superintendent, Brian Dale. We have information from Briggs, Baker Monument. So we're gathering information from different articles and over the years. So there is, there is a lot of information out there to put together and to, we want to put it in one area that we'll be able to go through it. Our goal is to start with the burial ground on Mill Road and see where that goes. And then in future years, we'll, you know, Public Works maintains six burial grounds. That's one of the six. So and then if we can move to other burial grounds in Falmouth.
Is it correct to say that, yes, Megan, go ahead?
Oh, sorry. I'm just wondering, we had heard from Ed Hadad back when he sort of brought this issue before us about the idea of creating a committee to help manage some of this. And as I'm hearing Peter talk about the fact that there are, the information is sort of dispersed in various sources throughout town, to me, that sounds in some ways exactly like the type of work that a committee of folks who really are very interested and committed to an issue could assist DPW with. Given how much DPW has on their plate, ARC has on their plate, I don't know that their time is best spent trying to dig through ARC's. Some are already obviously in their possession, but others seem to be, you know, private third-party entities that, you know, maybe a committee can assist with that. I don't know if that's something that needs to revisit. This just sounds like such an enormous undertaking in adding it to the list of work for DPW, which seems, you know, it's either going to really stretch their people power, or it will get put, you know, quite on the back burner, because we'll have constant other projects that take precedent.
Do you think you need some volunteer help with that?
Yeah, we've had other conversations about that, where it goes. What we're looking at, Megan, is Public Works will take this from right now and gather what we can and put it together. Where this goes, where this goes is where it goes. But we will gather it, and we'll gather the information together and get this thing off the ground and get it started for the burial ground. It is correct, there is a lot of information out there. I started, we started a folder, a folder on our network a couple of weeks ago, and we probably have 15, 20 items in there already for different articles and different information that we have. We have old pencil-drawn maps that are actually done on the old onion-skin linen paper that was done, that was given to us by Baker Monument, Grafton Briggs and Baker Monument. So we do have a lot of information that actually has names on it, names on the headstones, you know. But, yeah, there is, there is a lot of information to go. But what we're looking at doing right now is we're going to pick up the information that we have. We'll meet with this company, and we'll start moving forward with this to get, at least get it rolling again. And then where it goes is where it goes.
Well, maybe then we'll consider a little bit later down the line if we want to put a committee together for it and gauge if there's a need. I mean, right now, it sounds like the consultant's going to do most of the work, right?
Yeah, I think the consultant's going to take their information, they're going to take our information, and they compile it, going to compile it all into one area.
And bring a report, and then we'll see if we want to put a committee on it?
Correct. Well, they'll give us a, they'll give us a report with more of like a priority as to, you know, the headstones and the markers that need to be restored, the ones that are, that are critical, and a cost estimate. And then we'll be able to go from there for, you know, go into town meeting, or CPC, or however we're going to go for funding.
And the Historic Commission might want to take an interest in, you know, applying for the CPC funds? I don't know if that's, is that a-
I think that, yeah, I think there are some funds that have been applied for a, there's going to be a conditions assessment study. I think that there's already been, that's been submitted by Historical Commission to CPC.
Okay. I think that's probably what, that's probably what this is.
Yeah, I just think we need to, you know, coordinate as best we can and just support our DPW and ARC, because we know that there'll be some dedicated folks in town who really know how to dig for this information and are happy to consolidate it and put it together in whatever way helps DPW. So I just hope, you know, Peter, you come back to us, let us know where the, you know, where everything stands, and if we can help by getting that committee together for you.
Yes, ma'am.
A question. Are there state regulations that apply to these kinds of historical sites?
You have to be a registered preservation contractor to do this type of work. Yeah, yeah. It's not, Public Works can't go over and do the work. It's through the commission.
Other than lawn maintenance.
Right. And, you know, we anticipate and we expect to be working with Ed Hadad and the commission as this moves forward.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Peter.
How old is this red stone that you're aware of?
In that, in that, that burial ground, I believe, the original was 17, it's about 400 years old. I believe it's, I believe it's in the 1700s. This report from Ann Sears, when she did that, when she did the report in the spit sale back in 1995, it's pretty interesting when you get into that, when you, it starts going through the different years and the different stones that were used, and the different symbols that were used, and how it was used. It's quite detailed with a lot of photography, a lot of photographs in it.
It'll be good to know, because some of them are probably going to have to be rebuilt, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you can see some, there's even some photos in this that was done back then, that there's pieces of stones that were on the ground, so. Yeah. And it was, it was the, it was what they had at the time for stone to be able to do the work, too, so. But I believe the oldest stone in that area is about 400, 1700s.
I always think of that one that says, "I told you I was sick." Okay, well, thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. And in the future, as we get more information, we'll come back to the board with an update, especially when we get this compiled with this company, this information and plan.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now moving on. Minutes, if you don't have any other minutes from regular sessions in our packet. And we have the one executive that we did today, and we want to move to approve and release.
As edited, so moved?
As edited. And is there a second?
Okay.
And all those in favor?
Just to clarify, this is to approve the minutes and release them for public?
I think so, unless anybody has a different opinion.
In one motion?
Yes, it should be in one motion, yeah.
Okay, I want to clarify, thank you.
Thank you. No, a good thing you did, and included in that motion then.
Okay. And all those in favor?
That person, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
English, Paula, aye.
And Brown, aye. And anybody have Select Board members' reports?
I don't have a report, but I have a request. If the Town Manager's Office could send me the schedule for the Finance Committee meetings as they go over the budget, I'd like, if I'm not on vacation, I'd like to participate in some of those.
Okay.
And I know that they happen differently than they do throughout the rest of the year. I think they're more-
They do. They have not set their whole schedule up yet. I believe they have, may have a meeting tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, as well. They met last week, of course. As those come to our attention, we'll be happy to forward that to you, certainly.
Oh, go ahead, Sam.
I'm sorry, has to do with this item, because I actually attended that Finance Committee meeting, and they were discussing dates at the time, so I think they may actually be changing, so it may be tentative. But I would recommend, if you go on the website and just keep looking for Finance Committee, you'll see when they post their next agenda.
We'll get to notify me?
Notify me is good.
Because even though I'm the designated liaison, I used to get agendas sent to me automatically, but they haven't been doing it for a while, so that's what I'm doing.
Okay, we'll scratch that. I can do it myself. Thank you.
Yeah, it's helpful and pops right up. Yes?
So I just want to remind board members that we should be taking a look at the tool that I sent to you before the holidays for the evaluation of the Town Manager. I'd like to get that moving. I did put a return back to me dated February 15th, I believe. So if you have comments on the tool itself, which I think a couple of people did, if you could get those to me, that would be great. And I would also ask that the Town Manager work on his self-evaluation, because I'll need that, to get that out to the board as they're filling out the evaluation.
Very good. Any other reports from board members? If not, Mr.?
Is, are town offices closed on Monday for EVOC Day?
Yes.
For EVOC Day?
Yes.
It's the holiday. And I might mention that you do have to sign up to participate, and that's a Zoom presentation this year. But I just went online and looked for what is-
Oh, No Place for Hate?
No Place for Hate, Falmouth, I guess, dot org, and you get, there's a place to register your participation.
Right.
You get, you know, the Zoom link back in their response. As you mentioned it, I sort of like pass on that experience.
Kind of a shame we can't go to the Seacrest and have a nice breakfast, but I will.
Someday.
All right, well, I don't have anything big to report today, so is there anything else? Mr. Suso?
Just I want to note also that the Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee met in the past week as well, and they continue the progress on their fine work, and they anticipate setting a public meeting, public- anticipate setting a, a public meeting, public information meeting. The date has not yet been set, but I'm talking about that would be early in February and likely in the Herman Room at the library, similar to the process that has been followed for the senior center. And that is moving forward very well.
Okay.
I was happy to join the Finance Committee also.
Oh, Mr. Sueso, could you tell us, is there any report of any progress with the West Falmouth Station for the water heater? Are they making a?
They're, yeah, they're making, making great progress on that. The, the water heater, of course, burst unexpectedly and caused major electrical problems, unfortunately. It's also gonna require the generator be replaced and a switch for the generator. It was a dated component, but had been functional, but the water damage has taken it out of service. So we're looking at a replacement for that, which is taking a little bit more time. The boiler, the new boiler that had to be replaced as well, because that was damaged. We're working on the plumbing for that boiler, and my understanding is that it will be fired up later this week. That needs to happen, of course, before we can reoccupy the station, because it's just not the hot water heater, although the water heater damage caused all these other related problems, unfortunately. So that's an item that we're pursuing. We're also looking at an insurance claim to at least recover some of the cost for these replacements, damage-related. So hopefully later this week, we'll have the boiler up and running, and then we can reoccupy the station. The generator may take a little bit longer, and we're working through that as well. But it will not prevent us from reoccupying the station, we just need to get the heater up and running, and that has all come along well. And my, thanks to Greg Andicott, our facilities manager, to Fire Chief Tim Smith and his colleagues as well, our town electrician as well, for their fine work in teaming up to get this reopened.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
I hope, I hope something's being done to keep it from freezing up, because it's gonna be pretty cold tonight.
Yeah, the building's been winterized.
It has been, thank you.
It has been, good point. Also, just wanted to confirm our, the next, the Board's meeting on Saturday is your meeting is approximately 8:00 AM, it starts certainly, until approximately 11:00 AM here at Town Hall, and we'll look forward to posting that agenda by Wednesday.
Could I just request an agenda item for a future agenda, the 31st or into February? Could we get an update on where we are with the hiring for the several open commissions that we have at this time? I think it would be important to-
Hiring update, yeah.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
All righty, is there, if there's nothing else?
I was just gonna say, if no one has anything else, I would say you are four minutes off of your target, which is amazing. I think we had a 9:25 stop, I don't think that there's ever been a time that's been close. So we owe you a, I don't know, coffee or beer or something.
Okay.
Ice cream.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
And you're, I'm gonna take you up on that.
Adjourn and vote? Vote to adjourn?
Oh, yes, Scott Patterson, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
And Brown, aye, thank you.
Good night.